Residents working under a threat. And it was a, it was a, it was a disaster. Now, we're talking about access control.
I think we're just about ready to start, so I'll just say if anybody has a phone with them, please turn it to silence so we don't have phones ringing.
I thought through off our meeting this morning.
Start that, do that first.
And I told them.
Sorry, hon?
No.
Including.
Almost there.
Including our manager.
I'll wait till. They are there, okay. It is three o'clock now, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. And if you please join us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, and I will call the roll. Our district attorney, Tony Pierce, is present. Supervisor Tinkle is present. Supervisor Banks will not be present. Supervisor Feinberg is here. Supervisor Guy is here. Supervisor Flaherty and our district manager, Chris Schumaker, is here. And we have Frank Coffey is our business manager. All right. And Chris, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you just real quickly for the first.
Sure, ma'am chair, if I may, we have a contingent from the pool and they've, they had some issues about floats and noodles and I think it was a misunderstanding, but that I think we have resolved. But I asked Mr. Martin Conley here with the group if he wanted to please get up and speak for the group because otherwise they'll all be sitting there for an hour waiting for us to get through our workshop. Mr. Conley, you want to come up and introduce yourself and?
Good afternoon. My name's Martin Conley, one two seven seven two Devonshire Lake Circle. Main reason I'm here is because a group of us goes to, go to the pool. We use noodles. Most of the time, the noodles are used because doctors have told us that pool water PT is the best. We go to the pool, we're told no more noodles. Who made that decision? I found out it was Glenn who works here. I talked to Glenn yesterday. And he told me that there's a state law that noodles and other flotation devices are not permitted in a public pool. Now, I didn't know we were a public pool. Secondly, I said, is, do you have the statute for that? No, but we're making signs up the post. I went up this morning, no signs. Then I found out this morning after I was up there that the policy was changed. There were noodles would be allowed. Okay, that's good. Nobody knew. Go up there this morning and there's a group of women mostly, old, not older, but I'd say, you know, forty to seventy.
Be careful there.
I, I, I'm in that group too.
We heard you started a blend of age.
Yes. Uh, and they were using noodles and other flotation devices. Well, I talked to Glenn, like I said yesterday, and he said, well, that's okay. It's, it's a, a group, designated group, and they're allowed to do that. I said, well, I can't make it to the three days a week aquatic aerobics with noodles. There, can I go in a little corner of the pool with my noodle and do my exercises that I do religiously? And no, you're not permitted because you're not part of the group. While I was up there this morning, there was no room for anymore. There were at least fifty participants.
Wow.
So I feel that's discrimination against us who can't make it. Uh, plus, I was told by Glenn that the board could change the policy of no noodles or flotation devices. I said, well, if it's a state law, how can the board ever rule state? So basically, this comes down to what Chris said. There was a total lack of communications. Uh, day before yesterday, anybody that came in with a noodle was told they had to take it out. They couldn't use it. They took all the noodles out from the back of the pool that were in a container and they went somewhere. God only knows where. But, you know, I think if, if somebody had to make the decision, it was past Chris, I mean, Chris, I'm sorry. Glenn sent it up, but didn't tell me who. So that's one reason we're here. I'm here today is to find out the chain of command that comes in arbitrarily, throws everybody out with a noodle. And then the next day, you're allowed to have noodles. So that's what we're, we're here to find out information on basically keeping the public, the people, the residents advised of any decisions like this. The last big decision about the pool was when they, there was a, a statement or a policy change, a wish to permit the public to come into our pool. They can be charged. Well, that went nowhere. But again, I think we deserve to have, be given information as it pertains to the residents. I mean, everybody here either voluntarily or works for us, the residents, but yet we're the last ones to be advised of anything. And then it comes to the point where somebody has to come, get a couple people, a group, and say, what is going on?
Chris, would you like to clear that up for him?
Sure, and I'm, I'm still talking to Mr. Conley, but I think it was a communication misunderstanding that started with the party that had some issues with one of the staffers and they said, no noodles. And then it went to the next staffer, no noodles. And, um, first I heard about it was the day before and I was like, wait a second, what's this all about? And I said, you know, and we looked at the state regulations and it doesn't allow things that interfere with safety and a lot of city pools do not, or public pools allow floats because they can, you know, hinder it. But the noodles, and that's what I explained to him in the group before, was a communication issue. We don't have any problem with the noodles. And, um, Brian went up, our new public works director, and talked to the staff folks today to try to ascertain, how did you guys decide to, you know, implement or make this policy change? Because obviously, anything like that would go to the board first. And like I said, I think it's a misunderstanding. I apologize and apologize to the group. And I also asked some otherwise, how are things up at the pool? And they seem to be pretty happy.
Yeah, they're, they're not bad. They've been better. I mean, uh, at least recently, uh, they've decided that cleanliness is a good idea. I mean, the furniture is, has been started to be clean. Uh, the decking is filthy. I mean, uh, prior to this year, at least, it would be hosed down and cleaned and, and the bird crap would be off the tables. Uh, now it's like, okay, Glenn, and a staff member comes over and says, whoops, I'll take, clean that up for you. There's no excuse for that. When it's one o'clock in the afternoon and they, and the pool's been open since seven.
And we did just put together a maintenance checklist for them to check on both shifts to make sure that doesn't happen.
Well, I think it's, that's good because it's, it's, it's not the way it has been in the past. And I'd like to see it get back to where instead of sitting there watching TV, the staff is actually doing a, doing something. And the other thing is, it was brought up that, uh, possibly the noodles were removed because the kids were playing with them and hitting each other and everything else. Well, I don't know what the staff members' duties entail. I know they're not, uh, lifeguards. If they're pool attendants, then that means that they have to have some say over the conduct and activity and behavior of the people using the pool. But to, you know, come in, come into work and sit in the office and oops, it's two o'clock, I go, I go out and check the water. I mean, that's, that's, that's not it. Not when I'm sitting there having to go clean my table. Or I get out of the pool and I walk to my chair and I look at my feet and they're black.
Well, I, I appreciate that and, uh, I'm sure you and I'll have a question, one-on-one talks pretty soon to address some of that and clear any clarifications.
Well, I, I would appreciate that too. And I, thank you to the board for hearing me out.
We appreciate you all coming.
Thank you.
Al, thank you.
I have, I have a follow-up question on the pool also, because I've been getting phone calls from people about the hours.
Yes.
Uh, we haven't approved any change in the hours that I'm aware of, are we? It's still what the original hours are?
Well, the, the issue we had with that is the state law says it's sundown sunset at a half an hour beforehand and we don't have any lighting at the pool. So if it's six thirty, six forty-five and it's not light yet, we can't let people into the pool. Uh. And our, our hours are seven o'clock, but sometime when the time changes. And in the evening too, if it's five forty-five and getting dark.
But right now, it's seven o'clock?
Yes.
Okay, was my understanding it had been changed to seven thirty? It's not, it's seven o'clock? Okay. No, I was, missed, misled.
Yeah, the only time we change the hours again will be when the savings time changes. But we, they were letting some people come in, the early swimmers especially, they'd get there about twenty to seven, you know, some lap swimmers. And, uh, they told them, it says, you know, you can't come in until it's light.
And then the other one was, uh, do we have a, uh, a rule against unattended, uh, youngsters?
No, we have very few rules up there and that's kind of where this started, is they had a party with a lot of kids that were getting noisy and out of hand and jumping on the pool. And when the staff started talking to about it.
What age? What age?
Um, I think eleven, nine to eleven, but they seemed to be.
Just think of having adult there.
Well, they had adults there and the adults took exception to the attendant talking to the kids and taking exception to them not being allowed to jump in the pool. And they, I think they're kind of a rowdy group.
Get names and adre, names and addresses and they're banned from the pool.
Yeah, well.
It's easy. That's ridiculous.
Mrs. Flaherty, okay. The closing of the pool is still five fifteen? Are we extending that because it is getting, um, darker later?
Yep, oh yeah. It'll, it'll go with the, uh, time change and also with the light. It's just that, uh, because we don't have lights in the pool.
Okay, and I want to make sure I clarify this. Residents can swim and use noodles in the pool?
Yes.
Okay.
They always could. We never changed it.
I was there when that party was going on on Sunday and it was by far one of the best parties ever at the pool. They would behave. There was no problem. I don't know when the, nothing. They were kids.
Yeah, kids.
I don't know what was wrong because normally their bodies, the parents don't pay any attention. These parents were on them. The kids were very good. You really didn't even know.
They weren't fighting with the sticks or the noodles? Where'd that come from?
No.
It was, they stopped it.
But they stopped it. It was nothing.
No, it wasn't bad at all.
No.
Thank you.
And I'm reading his newspaper. He, he was appalled by the noise. So if you want to read newspaper all, it's, it's.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, to the workshop.
To the workshop.
I have another question.
Do you want to come up to the front?
Sure.
Just identify yourself and?
My name's Diane Pusk. I'm from Stony Brook. Um, we were informed that it, at least by one attendant, that even though they're certified, they can't touch anybody if something happens.
They being the attendants?
Yeah. I mean, somebody fell out of the chair and nobody, they didn't come to help. You know, we did.
Yeah, that, that, that must be some interpretation too, because what they instructed is they can't give first aid like treat.
No, they can't. They said they can't touch us. If something happens, there's, here's where the defibrillator is, here's where the phone is, dial nine one one.
I'd love to talk to them about that interpretation.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We'll offer a band-aid to come in that we clean when they go.
No, we have, uh, we actually put some new first aid kits up there and they're instructed to hand the first aid kits.
She wouldn't put it on. She just came.
Well, typically, we won't do that because if there is a medical issue or somebody gets an infection or a cut, then someone says.
Was somebody gonna call in?
But we do have first aid kits and we do distribute first aid supplies.
There was a man one day sitting in a chair next to his wife and the man's out, out of his chair.
Right.
Hello?
And we couldn't get him up. Hi, it's, uh, it's, it went for.
No.
Wrong note.
Right.
I'm so sorry. Yes, the girl, the attendant, to help. And she said, I can't. I can't put hands on.
Well, we'll talk to them about that. That's just common courtesy. Okay, well, we appreciate your comments and help and I'll, uh, meet with the group, Brian and I will, and see if we have any other issues.
Can I do CPR?
That's a good question. I'm sure they would. They're CPR trained.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other things? They aren't lifeguards. They're, they're pool attendants, but they are first aid trained.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'm gonna move the meeting into our workshop because we have a long meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's Chris?
It's everyone.
So there will be questions before the meeting? Okay.
Yeah, there's still the public opinion part.
Hey, Chris. Well, Chris, enough time to introduce a public question on, on the, uh, proposed, uh, development called Boardwalk on, uh, gaming drop.
That would be before the, uh, regular meeting on open agenda comments. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
If you want to fill out a card, and I actually have their permit up here.
Oh, you do?
Yes, sir. Um.
I want to switch on the same thing, so.
Yeah, and I'm gonna move up at the, at the last meeting, I did kind of a foreshadowing where we were looking at our utility rates and we brought up a couple of issues. One, that the approximately one point six million dollars in utility relocation costs that we're gonna be confronted with, uh, with the roundabout utility relocation wasn't in our rate. Uh, our last rate case. And we also talked about, uh, impacts to the rate if we take on any debt from the state revolving loan fund. If some of those projects, we actually borrow the money, um, instead of using cash flow for them. And that debt service also isn't in the rate. And we also started looking at, uh, potentially changing, um, the rate to change the tiers, uh, drop those down to penalize, um, the rate. And a little lower water use than we do right now. We're at fifty thousand gallons every other month with our bill cycle. And the last thing we looked at was possibly a, a rate surcharge. If you have a development that has a master meter, the way our permit is, it's based on acreage in the development or acreage for all the gateway. And the water management district allocates the water according to that acreage. And I guess the point being is we can build all the wells and all the pumps we want, but the district isn't gonna let us pump all the water that we want. They're gonna stick with that allocation. And a lot of the master meter communities and even the residents, uh, it's not an issue with them because they say as long as they pay their water bill, that's not a problem. But where it becomes a problem with us and how much water we can actually pump. And they regulate that. And if you break that, then when you, they're either gonna say something about it or when you go in to renew the permit, they're gonna say you have to have a conservation program. You have to change your rates. You have to take steps to reduce your water usage. And, uh, in most cases, the only tool that we found where conservation programs are nice is a rate signal. And when we changed the irrigation rate, it sent a signal that we got a lot of feedback from a lot of people. And a lot of these master meter communities started coming in, looking closely at their water usage and how they could reduce it because their bills were going up significantly. And we had a couple of communities, one, they said, why is our bill so high? So we look at our meters, well, you're watering five days a week. Um, other communities, they had irrigation systems that were broken or leaking, but they hadn't done anything about it because they were used to paying a little bill. Well, now they're doing something about it and fixing those leaks. And, uh, so what I'm here today is kind of with those, with those things I was talking about. And also, one more thing, we got our recent bill from the county for an annual true-up where we pay a maintenance portion of the plant next door. And, uh, typically, that's been about thirty thousand dollars. We budgeted fifty thousand dollars for it. And we just got the bill for eighty thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars. And of course, we don't take that at face value. Um, last time we went in and, uh, as Mr. Tinkle pointed out, they were allocating a higher share of the, of the, uh, cost for the maintenance and the amount of gallons we were using. Um, so that was negotiated down and, uh, we plan to move forward and take a closer look at this from an engineering standpoint, um, before we just write them a check. One thing we can't do anything about is, uh, previously, we were charged two dollars and thirty-five cents per thousand gallons for wastewater disposal. They bumped that a nickel. Um, nickel doesn't sound like much, but that wasn't in our rate and that's kind of a direct pass-through. So typically, we would automatically bring our sewer rate up five cents.
Say that again.
Per thousand. It went from two dollars and thirty-five cents to two dollars and forty cents.
Per thousand gallons?
Per thousand gallons.
For?
It's our wholesale rate.
Okay, I, I thought for wastewater, we were up around three ninety or four dollars per thousand gallons.
No, I, I think that rate went up.
Positive it was up that high.
Rate per thousand treated flow, two dollars and forty cents. I'll, I'll get the, I'll get the actual rate.
This isn't, this isn't, uh, based, it's based on the water meter usage?
Yes.
Okay. And it's not reuse charge?
No. It's just, yeah, because we don't get charged for the reuse water at all.
Well, I know it. That's why I was, I was saying they try to sneak that in. I'm positive that our rate we were, we were paying to the county was three, I want to say three ninety-five, a thousand gallons.
Take a look at that. I don't think that is that, that side of it. But those are the, we're, I'm planning on moving forward, um, and Daryl Parker's here today. He did.
Mr. Guy had.
Oh, it's Guy?
Uh, Chris, have you given any thought about, uh, what an additional two hundred and twenty apartments at the corner of Griffin and Gateway Boulevard are gonna do to our, uh, water usage and all of that?
Well, that, not much on the irrigation side and we have not met with them because they haven't put in a development application. Um, typically, what that would require is for the developer to pay those fees, um, the connection fees for those units. And he will probably get involved with paying some upsizing charges on the lift station and maybe some lines to the lift station from that development.
Well, what you said earlier made me think that we were, excuse me, near a cap, um, on the potable water.
Well, it's the, uh, it's the irrigated acreage and what I was looking at, the potable water, they don't.
Okay.
What they're looking at is they're more interested in the irrigation water because potable, especially in a community with a fair amount of retirees who use a lot smaller quantities of water. Yeah, well, some do, yeah. They, uh, they, you know, you have two people in a house versus a family of five. So the water use is a lot smaller in retirement neighborhoods per capita, but they don't regulate that the way they do irrigation water.
So I don't need to worry about an additional two hundred and twenty apartments?
No, and, uh, the county, the county shouldn't have any issues with it, but we haven't received the application yet. Or like, you know, we can approximate the flows, but until they come in the door and hand us an engineering study and hand us a request, um, much like any other developer for a subdivision, here's how many gallons we need. Um, then we'll react to it then and see what we need to do with our facilities. And, and also, I'll, I'll mention too that why, why it sounds somewhat punitive to send that price signal, um, when you're raising the rates to lower it. You can pay on one side or the other because otherwise we may be doing some of these expensive projects like pipelines and storage tanks and additional wells. And if we can throttle back some of our usage, then we won't have to make those capital expenditures.
Bill brings up a good point on that meter deal. Uh, we got burned several years ago with Royal Greens. Remember that trick? Uh, I think this time, let's take two twenty and do some multiplication. What is two hundred and twenty five eighths inch equivalent meters equal to? And then determine our three inch, four inch, six inch meters they're going to do. And whether they want to go with a three when it should be a four or whatever, we're just gonna jack the unit price to whatever it would have been for two twenty times fi, five eighths. And no more of this, what they did is they undersized to keep their base cost down. That's not right.
Yeah, and, uh, we're, we're a lot closer with that. A lot of times, even when they put a, uh, estimated gallons per unit, we'll, we'll look at other apartments and what their.
Yeah, I don't like that.
And well, what their actual usage is.
Wait till the first year and then that's gonna be the basis. We do the recall, but, uh, since they're new and they're gonna be coming to us the first time, we got a chance to, uh.
Make it right.
Make it right.
Do it right the first time.
I'm sorry?
Do it right the first time.
That's right. That's right.
But I, I didn't know if you, um, had any questions for Daryl about the rates or, you know, anything you'd like to ask him. But, you know, basically, we'll, we'll come back, you know, with a, a addendum to the last rate study and show you all the actual impacts, what it'll do to those rates. And then it'll be decision-making time. And we can also look at the same time at some of those capital costs we may be able to forego.
I don't know what Daryl's been told, but I want to make sure, because we had a brief discussion at, at the last meeting, uh, about some of these projects that are universal to all. And all meaning whether you're here or up north as a snowbird. Uh, I'm very concerned of anything that is a capital, uh, bond-related expense being put in the rate schedule. I want to see it in the base rate. Because otherwise, they don't pay for it. They don't pay their share.
Do you have any comment on that?
I've never seen debt retirement put on base schedules or on ra, uh, sliding scale schedules. That's usually operation expense.
Uh, and, and, and the concept, you're, you're right on track, yeah, that, uh, that's a fixed cost, if you will, that that should probably be allocated as much as you can, if not all, to the fixed component, which would be your base charge. Uh, it's kind of one of those things. That, that, that is sometimes a, that, even though it's right in theory, sometimes it's a policy decision to do it different than that.
Yeah, it's, uh, rate, rate accounting one-on-one is what I've been told. Yeah, I, so we're on the same page. Good.
And, and, and speaking on the same page, how about when you have an issue like a utility relocation that is almost considered an R and R, do you think it's more appropriate in the rate or in the facility charge?
Um, it's kind of one of those that could go either way because I, it, it, you definitely want to make sure it's getting recovered.
Right.
Uh, however you do it.
Well, we'll bring it both ways. Look at, you know, you know, on the rate and also on that monthly base facility charge that everybody pays.
Well, again, probably run in on that is the one that, uh, I'm trying to think of an example. A business that has a lot of car volume that would influence and impact that significantly, has minimal water usage or vice versa. It's, it's apples and oranges. The base makes it all level. Yeah, yeah, like a drive-through Dunkin' Donuts. Yeah, yeah. The, the, the issue is, is that the, the water they use, it could be either they get the, the short side of the stick or the long side. You don't know. On the base, it's all equal.
But we're gonna do, uh, I'm gonna move forward with Daryl and we'll put those numbers together and bring them back and show the impacts. And, you know, I, I don't think, uh, recovering the cost for the relocation's going to be an option. Um, the only option would be pulling out of reserves and that would leave us precariously low on that in case we had a big break. So that, but the, the other ones would be optional, how we would, um, fund some of those projects, whether it's SRF or whether we do it through cash flow or a combination.
I was thinking there was a third issue. It was the utility rates. There was that. There was one more.
Uh, we looked at a surcharge.
Oh, I know what it was. It was the, uh, uh, facility plan improvements project.
Right.
Yeah.
And, uh, I met, I was in town.
That's that eight or nine million dollars.
Yeah. Well, that's exactly what we're talking about, SRF, whether how much we would do out of cash flow or borrowing.
Oh, okay.
And we're gonna, and we did plug some of those numbers into, you know, our forecasts and rates, you know, for that. And, uh, also, I met with, uh, Tim Banks and Pam Kesha when I was in Tallahassee two weeks ago and they had the facilities plan. And, um, Tim went ahead after I told them the board's action and directed the staff to move forward with a formal review of the facilities plan. So that's moving forward. And again, we can make the application for that. And, uh, it's my recommendation, you make the application, see what the rate is and bring it back because then you have the option at that time if you want to sign a loan agreement. But eight or nine months from now, if you decide you want to fund some of that through those low interest rates with the SRF, then you got another six to nine months to go through the process.
Well, if you go into the twenty years, then you do the validation process.
Right. Or if you, uh, decide you want a cash flow of three million and that, you know, borrow five, so you stay under that limit. Well, that'll, that'll be another option.
And in the five years, yeah.
And, uh, that's all I have on, uh, the romantic issue of rates, charges and fees. And the only thing I can end with, um, that may be making it more palatable is out of the twelve utilities in Southwest Florida, Gateway has the lowest utility rates. And even if we had some what we might consider significant, you, you know, utility rate increases, you know, we might be at eleventh or tenth out of the twelve. But we certainly aren't gonna get it anywhere out of that bottom twenty-five percent quartile. And, uh, with that, I'll turn you over to some issues that Kenny has that we're facing out in the field on the operational side.
Good afternoon. Kenny Hall, utility manager. Uh, Frank's gonna give me one second to get set up here. Good afternoon. Um, I wanted to, uh, we're going to rehash some things, uh, that I, I came forward to the board with, um, on the Xenter system. And then I'm gonna swing into, uh, the oak. And then I'm gonna swing into uh the oak tree issue, uh and I kind of split a uh a presentation together for the oak tree issues, cause it's a much, it's a pretty serious issue. Um and it just keeps getting worse and worse and worse, but I wanted to start off on the uh the Zenner side of things. Um we are currently really behind on putting these MIUs that have died. And we keep getting farther and farther behind and it is very difficult for us to get caught up. Zenner brought in three people this week at no charge at to help us get caught up as best we could. Um with my staff, uh we are short-staffed at the moment, I have uh four people in the field all day hanging MIUs. Uh and plus with Zenner what Zenner sent, uh we have are yet to get caught up. And this has has many side effects to it, it kind of trickles out throughout the system and it becomes systemic, billing issues, uh estimations, uh uh cost issues associated with the MIU replacements and now what's really, really got me concerned are these ETRs. Uh this is a very serious issue uh with the ETRs, the MIUs are difficult and they're challenging and but we can handle that, but when we start getting into the ETR issues, we're starting to get into some to some really serious business here with what it's how it's affecting how we go about what we do. Um so I just wanted to glance over that, I've been in contact with Zenner and they are forwarding the ETR report, I've asked them to explain to us what is going on, why these ETRs have suddenly spiked up and what is causing this. Um ETRs represent a much bigger problem where an MIU is just a simple fix, go in, it's not simple, but you go in, you change it out, put a new one on, hit it on, and we have a handheld and it it goes back to working with a new one. And ETR is a completely different ball ball game and 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 it requires more time, um and it represents a big, a much bigger and broader issue. Uh Zenner has not given me that report yet, um and I will be coming back with that um to give you kind of a full report. Um one of the more proactive things that I really wanted to try um is that uh the two thousand fifteen installs, um we're sitting at thirty-five, three thousand five hundred and forty-five left of the original installs, the others we have changed out. Uh one of the things that I'd really like to do is to go proactively and have Zenner get on board with us to get to front us these MIUs and go out and change them all out. Uh and then put this issue is the install that the original install that caused is causing this. So if we get them all changed out, we would know relatively quickly, within, say, six month period, if that is the problem. Um Leslie uh called and talked to Pana Gorda, who has the system and Margate and they are not having, am I got that right? Not having the same issues that we are having. So we're kind of uh hanging our hat on that original install, what happened, how that how we went about that. So with that said, I have uh four four of our field staff in the field all the time, every day, this week and probably next week, installing MIUs. So we're chugging along in the middle of the day, hopefully, if we're lucky, we'll get a phone call, there's a big leak in my front yard. You guys, can you guys come out here and tell me what's going on, myself or Felix, our lead operator, will go out there and will determine what's going on. We find out, uh we got a leak on our side, we got a leak on the resident's side and that's where this starts. So we go and check out what's going on. And what we're finding and we're in the in the up over four hundred of these oak trees with our our boxes and our Zenner meters and our MIUs are embedded in these trees, they're not coming out. They are just completely rooted. What uh it is breaking the box, the lids won't set on them, sit on them correctly, it's creating uh some serious safety issues. Um and not only that, our MIUs, we have two MIUs per box and they are just dangling there, will not fit into the box. So we have about almost two hundred dollars in our equipment hanging off the top of these lids that will not fit correctly into the box. That will lead to a break. Um but this is the normal and this is the normal scenario and this is on the twenty to thirty-year-old communities, Devonshire Lakes, Waterford Village, Mahogany, Mahogany or or Gateway Greens, all the older, Pine Wood Lakes is a perfect example. The meter boxes are in front of these trees, they have become completely rooted. In the oh one or two of the communities, they're behind the trees, which makes the problem even worse. But this is the your your general scenario, two boxes in front coming off of a common line, we'll get a break. This picture here is where we came out, hacked through this oak tree, repaired it, two weeks later, we are out hacking through the other side of it to get the irrigation side fixed. Uh they kind of both broke within about a, I'd say, a two two-week, three-week period, uh very common. Uh and this these are the older black black poly lines. Uh here's another really good example, the 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 it is completely embedded into this tree, that ball giant root you see sticking out of there is probably almost eight inches that we've had to hack through. This represents hours and hours of labor to get to this point. And and the thing of it is, is that when you do get it exposed, you've got to knock out another two to three feet in each direction so you can get in there and actually work, just exposing it, you know? And as you expose it, the leak becomes bigger and bigger and bigger, causing more and more water, you know, et cetera. Uh so we're coming on this more and more and more, variations of it, now, we call them short side, long side. This where you can see the oak tree, if you stand where I was standing, that oak tree at the point is about four feet over the top of that driveway, it's just completely lifted that and our boxes have become embedded in it. Um this is a short side, short side, meaning there's a garage and a garage together, uh the property design runs about down the middle and we have a very, very short distance that we can work with. If you, a more common one is a short side, long side, meaning there's a garage and then on the other side is the guy's front yard and then the garage is on the other side, but this is a a a common one. Uh this is another common one where they cut the tree out. Um for the from the utility standpoint, this really means nothing to us, if it breaks, we're still going into that tree, whether it's alive or dead, and it usually is a nightmare trying to get in there. Other than you're gonna do it in the sun, whereas if it was a live tree, you'd have shade. That's about, it's about all you're gonna, it's still the same to us, uh to to the utility department, how we go about fixing it. Uh this one here is in Pine Wood Lakes with the fire hydrant in front of it and that's the plumber there kneeling and praying that he doesn't have to go in there and fix it and then it's on the district's side. Um this is about a eight-inch circumference root, uh we dodged a bullet on this one, this is on the resident's side, which is PVC, very common uh happening here. And this is the nightmare scenario, whenever we in Gateway, especially in the older communities, we come up to this, you have a giant oak tree, the two boxes and that storm sewer. When you see that storm sewer, at least for me, when I see that storm sewer, I know there's gonna be a problem because every time they put these where they put the storm sewers in, it's kind of a crap shoot and how they did it and what they did at what time of the year, what developer or who did it and what the codes were. Um this represents to me, when I see this and there's a break, ten thousand dollars. Because it's a conduit running across the street, the water, the main is on the other side. So when they do this, right where that storm drain is, was where the conduit would normally be and we would we could we could catch it there, but on this one, it's not. So what they have to do is the the money is is the connection or the conduit coming across the street is under one of those driveways. So and and if we have to go in there and repair that, uh you're talking big, big money. This is the nightmare scenario for us, we pull up and see that storm drain and we're all like, oh lord, what are we getting ourselves into, because these can be extremely taxing.
It could still be underneath the road too.
Oh, they're they're definitely under the road, it's where it comes out on the other side that we that that and it's usually it will be under the driveway. So we're out hanging out MIUs, we get a call, we show up, this is what we find, we have a break, it's on the customer's side. This tree, oak tree, is on, I think, Mahogany Olive Drive. Um it represents about, it's about eight feet in circumference and about ten feet around it is the root ball. The they called us, we have a break, no, it's on your side, it's on the customer's side, the PVC is busted, we can't do anything for for it. So what he does is he comes out, calls his plumber, plumber comes out and looks at it and and he's saying, you know, I have to go through this oak tree. Uh so what they do is they go around it, uh and it's a very clever, but this is creating lots of issues. So what this represents is what the plumber did, he caught it up at the top outside of the oak tree, brought it, trenched all the way around the root ball, got to the point, did a ninety, sh- went straight into that box, where that line straightens out is eight feet. Cuts it, turns it, goes into our meter box, cuts our meter box, goes into the on our side of the meter and drops it down into the check valve on his side and connects his water. And this represents in front of that meter, there is a giant root ball, but that's the shortest side and that's the least costly side, believe it or not, for him to do all this. Uh this is more the cheaper way of doing it, as opposed to hacking through the tree and that's looking down on our meter box, that's what the repair looks like. And this is happening more and more and more, we're coming up onto this and finding this.
Is that the proof of coming up to the top?
No.
That's not?
No. And then we have now we have a extreme trip hazard, really trip hazard, anybody steps on that, uh i- it's not gonna be good. Our MRUs are sitting there dangling on top, laying on top of the roots. Uh if you step on top of that and land on that water line, it's gonna break it, uh that's PVC. So this is what we're kind of running across here. Um so what do we do? This is what it would it would the white and the yellow next to the tree represent the current what's there. Uh and those lines from the front to where he cut it is about thirteen feet, eight feet of that is solid Southwest Florida live oak. It does not give, the plumber came up, looked at that and went around it, it's cheaper. Uh and the white line and the and the and the yellow line uh represent water and irrigation. So this is what we're finding. Um and and what we're suggesting is on this, what do you what do we do? This represents to this homeowner, a thirty-two hundred dollar bill is what he paid.
How much?
Thirty-two hundred dollars.
Thirty-two?
Thirty-two hundred dollars for this, for this repair here. Uh he requested that we move the box, which would make good sense, uh it's not going to get any better, it's just gonna keep getting worse and as the time goes by. So I put the two lines uh where they where the bends and pushed them down, which is where we would relocate the box. Um so this is our scenario, so should we relocate the box and move it away from these trees? For one, it's two boxes, so if I was to move one box, the the neighbor's gonna come out and ask me to move his box, or why would you go through all this trouble to move one box and not move the other? And then his neighbor and the people across the street are gonna come over and want me to move their boxes. So we I kind of developed a uh what we would do and how we would go about doing it. On the district's side, our meter box i- i- is relatively simple, it's not really a hard process. Though the process is on the on the resident's side, a resident for each one of those black Xs there, each resident has a water and an irrigation connection. The plumber's not going to move the irrigation, so we have two vendors to move this to our lines. So potentially four vendors to move two boxes. And we would have to get all of our stars to align, to get them all at the same stop, to get it all lined up. Um so what we would do is basically what I did, we would go, we would have the resident would have to go back past the oak tree, cut his find his lines, cut them and then direct them away from the tree to where we set our boxes. This is a dual meter box, this is which whenever we have a problem with our boxes, the existing ones, we cut them out and we put a new box in, a plastic Carson box, it's about fifty dollars. The existing box is about six hundred and eighty dollars because of the copper setter that it sits on, so just that is a significant savings. So this is a dual meter box, this one is we uh which if we would, I would really recommend doing, we separate them. We we there's it's a plus plus minus the expense, but it's a plus plus all the way around. You move, remove the the box holding both the water and the irrigation connection, you remove any chance on the customer's side of a cross con- cross connection, which we've seen. Um you can install, we can, there's several benefits benefits to doing this way, but I'd say on the resident's side, it is a nightmare. And it is a very, very expensive nightmare, uh and it just keeps coming at us. So the two single meter boxes would look some similar to this, you'd have a dedicated irrigation, dedicated potable water. So then the cost, resident's side, anywhere from five hundred dollars to five thousand dollars per or both, depending on the situation. It's really hard to come up with a cookie cutter solution for this because there are so many different scenarios, but on average, anywhere from five hundred to five thousand dollars. Potable water, if it's potable water, it has to be repaired right away or the next day or as soon as you can possibly get out there, you cannot put it off. And that's for the resident and the district, somebody calls us and their water line is leaking, we go out and fix it then and there or uh as soon as we possibly can or get a professional contractor in here to do it. Irrigation, you can kind of schedule, you can move around, you got some, you got a little bit of time on that one. Um it creates an ongoing problem and ongoing costs, multiple repairs to the same line, especially on the resident's side, I've seen this in Pine Wood Lake several times where the line's broken three and four times over a ten-year time the residents live there. So by the time they've done, they've they spent well upwards of six to seven thousand dollars on this tree. Uh and then they c- creates trip and safety hazards uh that are very real, other than the giant oak tree with the roots sticking up out of the ground. You step into one of those boxes, it's not fit right and uh it's an ankle breaker. District's side, uh in-house repairs for potable and irrigation lines for us is minimum, our staff uh can handle most, anything that we can throw at it. Um the equipment, parts tubing uh for the lines, three crew members, uh the biggest the biggest determining factor for cost for us is the when it happens, is it on the weekend? Is it at two o'clock in the morning, is it on a holiday? Um I've got to get staff in here, if I can't get three three people in here, I'm calling a contractor. So to call out a contractor, again, time is the defining, besides labor, time. Is it on the holidays, is it after hours, is it on the weekend? Uh eleven hundred fif- to five thousand dollars per line, per repair. Where on the district's side, we're looking at about two hundred to fifteen hundred dollars if we do the repair. Uh last year, our most expensive, one single water line repair that took the actual repair took us about fifteen minutes. Uh it was the eight hours hacking through the oak tree to get to that uh was fifty-three hundred dollars, cost us fifty-three hundred dollars to do that repair. Um and then we have our estimated costs, so to move both boxes, to get them out of uh uh the the oak tree, the root zone, all of that uh is about five thousand, eight thousand dollars total for everything, and again, that's an estimate, it can be higher, it can be lower. Um and where I wanted to go with this was to uh what 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 can we do? We can stay as we do, we're just staying reactive, we can take it as a case-by-case basis and it's just gonna be a recurring cost. As time goes on, as this is proving to us over and over and over again, is that it's just gonna get worse and it's gonna get more expensive. Um we have come up with a budget and a target approach that we wanted to bring into the conversation, budget, fund and target the worst areas, older twenty to thirty-year communities, Pine Wood Lakes being the worst. Cypress Point is the worst one that I've seen yet, Gateway Greens, Devonshire Lakes, all the older communities, and do it on a five-year budgeting plan. Overall, would cost your overall or overall cost will calm down as staff gets better and better and better and better at it and it becomes a routine. Um if we were to go with this route, meaning the district hires a vendor and we do it all, from start to beginning, we do all the coordinating. Uh and one of the bigger uh benefits to that is it takes two two doors that I have to knock on and tell them, May twenty-eighth, we're gonna move your water lines and hook them all back up, this is what's going to happen. And then we do with the irrigation lines, uh that is an option, uh and there again, we can five-year budget it. We allocate a certain amount of money and then go out and start attacking the worst ones and and a proactive approach to try to to get it. It would be a matter of costs. Um we would have the uh the coordination and the payment options, which is where I would bring uh the district attorney in, is is would we be able to do the repair of budget it and then do it and have the residents, instead of handing our residents eight thousand dollar bills, uh a a payment option through the billing. Uh we could do something like that where you lose that shock value, it becomes realistic to them. Um and it's not just this gigantic sledgehammer on top of them on a Saturday morning, they have no water and then a plumber shows up and they have a five thousand dollar bill, if you want water, this is what it's gonna cost you. Um so the budget budget and target, I think, is our best option where we can really get after this. Um we're still gonna have breaks, obviously, and there's still gonna be uh a lot of sticker shock, but as time goes on, we can get start, you know, eliminate a lot of the worst ones before it gets. There are some time bombs out there, there are some real time bombs out there where you could get into uh ten, twelve, thirteen thousand dollars for a single water line that would take us twenty minutes to fix with a five-dollar repair coupling. It's just getting through these oak trees, getting through these lines and all the things that you have to do to get to that point. So a bu- a a budget and target approach, I think, is one of our best best options for this. Um and then this would dedicate three, we would need a minimum of three, sometimes four staff members to do this. Um and that was was basically what I really would 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 want to bring into the discussion about budgeting and targeting these 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 trees. And some of the benefits, um say, the breaks, the expensive repairs for our residents, who pay the bills, the biggest ones, and the district. Uh that we we could stop these reoccurring expenses. Uh, we, we, we could stop these reoccurring expenses, the more expensive repairs. Another thing, um, I worked for Collier County before I came to the district, and I was working on their eighty thousand, uh, meter changeout. And when they would do their irrigation, they would require a check valve on the irrigation. They would not, they were like us, they didn't have any, any kind of backflow prevention on the irrigation. Uh, we could get that on there, uh, for ours. And then another big one that we've seen is a pressure increase, because the lines are so constricted through these roots, through the trees, that we would, uh, get a nice, hopefully, uh, I wouldn't promise it, but I would, I would definitely let them know that they should see a really good pressure increase because of the constriction. New boxes, which is really good, the trip hazards, we could eliminate. And we would have an approved, approved plan and a standards in place. So, when we show up in somebody's door, we can, this is what we've been doing, this is what works, you know, would you be interested in doing this? And there again, for every one break, we'd have to get both the residents on board, because it, both, there's two boxes, but they all come from one common line. So, if I'm gonna dig out half of it, I'm gonna dig out both of them, I'm gonna move both of them. So, if we leave it to the residents, they're, they're just, it's not realistic to do. They're just not gonna, I, I can't see that working. Whereas if we did it, and we gave them a payment option through a reoccurring bill or something, along those lines, it could be really feasible. And then we could really get after this, uh, to get after this very serious issue. And that was pretty much what I had.
I'm not, I'm not gonna start with "I told you so." Issue on this estimating of the money. To me, we don't incur a cost if the damage is on the other side of the meter.
No, we do not.
Why, you're agreeing?
No, we do, we, we, if it's on the resident's side, we say it's, you know, there's nothing we can do. It's on, it's private property, it's yours.
Okay, I, I wanna make sure that we're not picking up
No.
costs that are on the res- resident's side.
No.
Okay, okay. The other one, I wanna go back to the, uh, I know about the MRUs, we've, again, I will not say anything more about that. We got what we deserved, because we didn't listen and we didn't sue the contractor that put them in. We learned. What's this about the other unit that's going out? When did this happen?
The, uh, the, uh, ETR, which is the, the lapse time register.
That's the breaks.
Yes, that's, that's the money. That's what makes all the magic happen. The MIU is just the vassal that, that makes, that does the connection. The ETR is what gives us, uh, all the information.
You, Leslie, you, did you talk about those to those other companies, too? Are they having problems with those?
Well, we've always had problems with those. Recently, we just had a, a bigger spike the last six months, where we're seeing a lot more of them.
I thought our agreement with, uh, Zennor was over a, what was it, ten-year or twenty-year sliding scale? I thought that was on MRUs.
No, it's on everything.
It's on everything?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, they're replacing them.
We've, we've heard the, uh, frightening numbers of MRUs. Are we at that same level of, on the others?
Well, I mean, compared to the MRUs, we're like thirty-one hundred years.
We had, I think we had four hundred for the year.
Four hundred?
For ETRs.
For the ETRs.
But the ETRs represent a whole bunch, a whole sequence of events that have to happen that, that, as an MIU, it'd take, it'd take our guys ten, twelve minutes, go in there, switch it out, and be done with it. An ETR takes a, a much, much more intensive process.
Well, it's associated with the meter itself.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, when those start going bad and those kinds of numbers, it's really got me concerned, because if it comes back and we end up with a thousand ETRs, I mean...
What, what is, what's happening to them? Are, are they, they just flat failing? I- is it a part that's breaking?
Most of them need to be recalibrated several times, or they're just dead.
They're what?
Like they're dead, 'cause it's essentially a battery that sits in the register.
Yeah.
So, essentially, either they're not able to go out and recalibrate them, or they just, there's no activity.
So, we have to put a new one in?
Correct.
And then re, and then calibrate it all back into, to get it to associate with that meter. I mean, it's a whole process.
And it takes extra time on me or billing, because we have to spend more time pulling reports and making sure that, you know, people are getting, or their reads are correct. So, that requires us having to get manual reads to verify.
What's, what's Zennor saying about that? We know what Zennor's deal was with the MIU.
I, I talked to Rich Sanders about this, and he was, said he would get me the report. I, I said, I, I, with that, with the amount that we've had for this year, um, I wanted a report, I wanted an explanation from Zennor on why this is happening, because say this is, uh, that's very concerning, very concerning with those registered, or those ETRs going out like that. Usually, it, it's, it's in onesies and twosies and threesies, and then all of a sudden, we have, for an entire year, we went from, I think, eighty to four hundred.
And, and everyone else that we're contacting is not having these problems?
Not to our degree.
Sounds like a legal issue to me.
Well, is it an installation issue or a device issue?
Zennor is, as far as Zennor's concerned, they're still saying it's, it's...
Were the ETR involved?
Yeah, that's, see, that's the part that I don't, I don't agree with.
Yeah, the ETR, I, I, I don't wanna speculate. Um, Zennor has been, has been, uh, customer service-wise, has been great with us, and they assured me that they would get me an engineering report from their engineer, why, you know, what, what is going on here?
Primarily, 'cause you have, I don't know how much they weigh, the meter itself, but during installation, they were seeing, or that they would hold the whole entire meter by the wire that's attached to the ETR. So, they would, that's...
Do what?
They're holding, they're picking up, they're picking up the meter by the wire, and it's, it's separating on the, on the inside, is, is one of their... I don't, I don't know about that.
Their engineering report will indicate, it's like a forensic analysis of the ETRs to see if the wires are separated inside, if not, it's another issue.
Yes. Yes.
And when do you expect to get that coming?
As soon as he, he didn't, he, he, he assured me that I would have it today.
Now, is Zennor sending someone out to replace these for us?
They send three, they send three, um, field staff that are here this week, um, to help us. 'Cause that's part of our no-read process, our no-read count.
How, how many do you have to totally do to do a complete replacement? How many left?
Uh, thirty-five, forty-five, three thousand five hundred and forty-five to completely change out the two thousand fifteen installs.
And how many per day, ballpark?
Thirty.
Thirty, so you got a hundred days. Hundred days of three men. Figure out what that calculation is. That'd be, that'd be a good start of the lawsuit right there, that dollar value.
Again, I guess it depends upon an engineering report, whether we want to have a separate report or analysis.
Sounds like to me, they already handed us our lawsuit. They said it was an installation problem. They were the contractor. Should've done it two years ago when I said, but we didn't do that. It's time to do it now before it gets too bad.
Well, it might be too late, yes.
Mrs. Flaherty?
Yes.
Calling back to the oak trees?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Could we inform residents of the problems with all the oak trees, sending out a letter and telling them that this, this is occurring, and making them aware that the monetary amount that they were gonna be charged because of something that might happen because of their oak trees?
What are they gonna do?
And encourage them maybe to...
I'm glad I removed my...
Eliminate the oak trees and the ones, I mean, that would be a start of proactive.
It could, it could vary, that could be a start, yes.
Our, our HOA is proactive. We have told anybody and everyone in our community that has an oak tree, for whatever reason, that I can even remotely put associated with a risk, take out the tree. Take out the trees. We're taking out oak trees right and left.
Or, or say, as, as we were, we, uh, we indicated, we could, we could go around them and leave the oak tree as it is. Uh, that, that is an option. Uh, that's, that's what we, we would wanna come back to you on.
But would it still grow to the point?
Yes, uh, we would, I would say, uh, within ten feet of the, of the center of that oak tree, move it another five feet past that, um, and we should be good to go. Uh, it would be, I mean, yes, they would eventually, but it gets to a certain point where that ball gets to a certain size, and it's not gonna, you know, just keep exponentially growing. It's gonna get to its point and pretty much stop.
When we had problems on the golf course, we were told that the roots go to the drip line.
Do what?
The roots go to the drip line. So, if you've got a big oak that's a twenty-five, thirty-year-old oak, and it's got a sixty-foot, you can drop straight down and you've got sixty feet of roots.
That's true.
You just said before that it didn't matter whether the tree was still there or not.
No, uh, uh, as far as the repair goes, um, if, if, if the line is, if, if they remove the tree and the, and the, the boxes are still embedded in that tree, a- and you go through a dry period, and then all of a sudden get a rainstorm, you're gonna get a break. It's gonna, it's gonna break.
So, taking out the tree is that, and then it's not...
That would...
Mr. Brand, you have a question?
So, excuse me, I think Florida statute protects oak trees. They're considered America's tree. And if you take out an oak tree, you're required by...
You have to replace it, yeah.
You're required by Florida statute to replace it with another hardwood tree.
Shade tree.
I'm not, I'm not aware of that re...
Hardwood tree.
I, I am not aware of that requirement. Uh, now, there are local regulations, and depending upon whatever Lee County...
Our HOA, our HOA's covenants do say that.
It used to be that you would have to get a permit from Lee County to remove your oak tree, but they stopped doing that, 'cause they got flooded with requests for permits, and they said, "You don't need it anymore. As long as your HOA meets the DO requirement for trees, you can remove."
Yeah, that's the issue.
Florida statute supersedes that.
I don't think...
And Mr. Brand, if I may briefly, Florida statute one sixty-three oh four five, "Local government may not require notice, application, approval, permit, fee, or mitigation for pruning, thinning, or removing a tree on residential property. The local government may not require a property owner to replant a tree that was pruned, trimmed, or removed in accordance with this section." And this was actually sent out by the House Speaker at the beginning of the session, because the statute, um, supersedes local ordinances and a lot of local ordinances and the HOA covenants and that.
That was adopted last year by the legislature, I believe.
Yes, and I just sent that out to some of you district managers and to our HOAs also. The government has no control over it.
There's easement from the street to, and that, for example, my house, the oak trees in the easement. And I, I don't know if that belongs to me or to the...
There's an easement over your property, the tree's on your property, not, yeah, the easement, it's just an easement over your property.
Mrs. Flaherty?
Yeah.
I was just suggesting that, if you sent the letter out to all these people, that these, this oak tree could cause this problem. And, you know, so that they know what, what they, what might happen, might be a, a way of forewarning them and...
Yes, and, uh, and, and it, that, that kinda varies. Uh, I've done it in Pine Wood Lakes, and they told me to, no, I'm not moving the tree. We're just gonna keep going around it, and, and they're happy with it. It's kind of a mixed batch, but yeah, that would be a...
Okay, just, just so they know that if it does cause prob- irrigation or water problems on their side, they're, they're gonna be responsible. At least that's giving them a heads up.
I agree with that.
Kenny, when the water line and the irrigation reuse line come across, let's say the main is on the west side of the road, and your house on the east, is it a separate irrigation and potable line for both houses coming across? Or is there a single water and a single sewer with a Y?
It's, 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 it, it will come across into a, in, under, in a four-inch conduit, and then it'll tee, tee, and then it'll go tee and tee.
Okay.
So, it's one line split between two, two, uh, two meter boxes. That's why I say, if you're gonna, if you're gonna do one, we, you, do them, do them both.
Just for clarification also, that statute says you don't need the permit if you get a sort of, um, documentation from an arborist, that the tree poses a danger to persons or property. And I think by saying it's going to crush roots, or crush pipes, it sufficiently qualifies. And the statute also says you cannot be required to replace the tree.
I know, like, on my property, we removed our oak tree because it was in such close proximity to all kinds of things that it was gonna destroy.
Your hurricane room removed an oak tree in my yard for me.
And, but I had two other hardwoods in the backyard, and I only needed one on my entire property.
That's your catch. You, you haven't done any dollar value of what this could progressively be. Yeah, we got that far.
Me, you know, no.
Doing what you were talking about?
I, I, from, from what I've seen in my experience in these repairs, I'm guesstimating, if we did it where the district controlled everything, which is, to me, the best option, where we get the vendors, and then we bring them in, and we have one vendor do all of it at the same time, and we can coordinate with the residents and let them know, "Your water's gonna be off, we're gonna flush your lines, and then we're gonna hook your irrigation up." So, if anything is wrong with those irrigations prior to us doing that, we would make, we, you know, kind of set a standard. We wanna check irrigation before it comes on, and then we hook it back up, we turn it back on. You're looking at, i- it's so varied, how old that oak tree is, what condition it is, between five thousand and ten thousand for both of them, for the whole shot, from the time we get there, the time we're done, and boxes removed, new lines. Some of them, we could, you, you can work around that, but as a standard, I would, I would guarantee a minimum of five thousand and go probably upwards. Some of them above ten thousand dollars, you could very easily get that high.
If, if, you've got this report that you're expecting to get in today, can we see that when it comes out?
Yes, absolutely.
Because my thing is, just guessing on what it's going to say, I think we need to have Mr. Sanders back in here. Have who, what? Mr. Sanders from Zennor back in here.
Z- Zennor, um, Zennor's been very responsive, uh, with, with anything that we've asked of them, as far as, you know, questions and, and what we wanna do. So, um, when I reported to him, we talked to him last week, um, he was kind of going, or wanted to come back in and kind of go over everything. And he, you know, Zennor stands by their product, their ten-year warranty and everything, they, they, they have stood by it. But yes, it...
Well, the rate this is going, ten years scares the daylights out of me, because then it goes on our nickel a hundred percent.
Say, we're, we're into our fifth year of that ten-year warranty. So, uh, if we were to keep going as it is, which I'm guesstimating it is, unless we can go out there and, or until the two thousand fifteen original installs are completely replaced out, um, we are going to, uh, it's going to pretty much stay much of the same.
Uh, thank you, ma'am chairman, a couple things. Uh, number one, uh, I think it's difficult to be talking about two different things at the same meeting at the same time.
Yes.
And, uh, the, the MRUs, um, is one issue, and the oak trees is separate. And I think we oughta try and discuss them individually and not back and forth. Anyway, um, as, assuming that we're gonna have a complete reinstall of the meters, unless they're installed properly, we haven't made a whole lot of progress. Some of the pictures that you showed us looked like some of those meters had been installed fifteen or twenty years ago. Uh, I just couldn't, I couldn't believe that, that they, that they were installed two or three years ago. And so, we're gonna have to have some supervision of the people who are doing the installations. And I'm not, I'm not making any bad comments about your folks, but there was apparently some terrible, terrible installations, or we wouldn't be where we are, would you agree?
Yes.
Well, how, how are we going to get from where we are to where we want to be and have some professional installations along the way, so we don't, we're not just replicating our problems?
I'm not quite following on the MR, on the, on the Zennor side of things.
Well, not, no, it's our problem, yours and mine and the five of us, okay, for the moment. How are you going to replace all of the meters that you need to replace and make sure that they're, that the replacements are installed in a professional way, and not some of this junk that I saw on that, on those pictures of yours?
Our field, our field people know how to do what we need done.
But they are, you told us, you told us several times that you don't have enough field people to do it.
No, we do not. We were, we were going to come and come, uh, we were going to actually have to increase staff.
Or con- or contracted.
Or contracted out. At Zennor, if we bring Zennor in, it's, it's, I think, ten thousand dollars for three days. I mean, it's an exorbitant amount, and they're not going to come in free like they did this, this week. They're not going to do it again.
Why not, since it's their units that are failing?
That's what I said, get the lawyers involved.
I mean, we've got, it's not our fault that, it's not our fault that their units are failing. Their units are failing because they weren't installed properly, or they're just failing.
Right. And their position is that we, they're honoring their warranty, and it's free of charge for, and they've given us a twenty-year warranty and a ten-year warranty for free, and that we would handle the, uh, installation of the, uh, MRUs.
I think the MRUs is different than the ETR issue.
Exactly.
And then, and then you have the, and then you throw the ETR issue, which is, which really has us concerned.
Kenny, when did that first surface, the ETR issue?
It's, it's been an ongoing thing, but it's never been...
Starting when?
Two thousand sixteen.
Okay, I think we need to, they need more formally put them on notice about the ETR. If you could send me all...
I think you wanna look at, look at their report first. I think you wanna look at, look at their report first.
Yeah, well, at least start, if you could send me at least the communications, if you had the first communications on it?
Yes.
Thanks.
Kenny, I have a question because I, I actually found where we had discussed this issue last year about this time. How many units, I've got the number of failures of the replacements from sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, but last year, of course, we were just beginning twenty nineteen. How many failed for the year? Do you know?
Four, nineteen?
Yeah.
Yeah, MIUs?
Mm-hmm.
Just under thirteen hundred.
Just on, yeah, it's thirteen hundred.
Thirteen hundred?
Thirteen hundred. Yes, and the year before it was twelve hundred. And then it went from five hundred in two thousand seventeen, yeah, and then it jumped up, it doubled and then it, pretty much.
How many so far this year?
Well.
Thirty-five?
Thirty-five?
How many have gone?
I'm sorry?
Bad? Well, that's part of the backlog that we're, we're still trying to get to, um, cause we have.
Yeah.
Seven hundred.
Yeah.
But that's not all. Dead MIUs, those could be wires broken, those are various things. Until they go out there, I don't, I can't really.
You don't know.
It sounds, it sounds as though you've replaced some of these meters twice.
Yes, we've had, or MIUs, we've had, we've had, we've had, I think. I think we're up in the, the forties where we've, we've replaced them, they've died, we've gone out and replaced them and then we've had to go back out there and they've died again. Say that's, uh, say we were at about forty for, for the years that we've been doing it.
Anything else?
Yes, but I can't repeat it, it's public.
You don't wanna say it out loud.
Well, the good news is there's nothing left in the pit to go wrong.
Mrs. Flaherty? Do you have any to investigate? What would you like to do? Or what is, what was your recommendation for us to consider?
The oak, uh, the oak trees and moving these boxes and if, if this is a viable solution, uh, to our residents. Uh, if, to be, take a proactive approach or to bring this into the conversation and bring back it on an agenda item to have a. To give us a formal standards of what we would be doing and how we would go about changing and moving these meter boxes.
I think we're talking about MIUs.
We're kind of, we've kind of moved, moved into two different subjects. For the MIUs.
Yeah.
Keep, uh, we, there's not really too much we can do, to be honest with you, until we have a, a concrete answer as to why these MIUs keep dying and now why these ETRs keep dying. We, there's, there's, I would, if I had it my way, I would like to go out and change out every one of the two thousand fifteen installs.
Well, if, if, if you were asked how many, right at this moment, February twentieth, how many are defective, what would you say?
Three thousand five hundred and forty-five.
That's all of them, or not all of them?
All the ones that were installed, all the ones that are left over from the two thousand, from the original install.
No, 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 that's, that's, you're, you're making a supposition. How many of them have proven that they're defective at the moment? Well, you don't, you're not getting a good read on them.
How many we have right now?
Right now.
Uh, seven hundred, about seven hundred right now?
Seven hundred?
Yeah.
Ten percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, right now.
So are those the seven hundred that Zennar is gonna concentrate on and replace?
They have the guys that are out here, they're helping with that number, which is what our staff is also working on.
So how long would it take to replace all of the original leftover twenty fifteen installs?
So we said a hundred, hundred days.
Hundred, yeah, about a hundred, yeah, two and a half months, three months, under ideal conditions, meaning we're never gonna get there. All kinds of things will happen in between, right?
Three people.
Yeah, maybe about six months, I would think, or five, four, four to six months would be a realistic number.
So why wouldn't Zennar be willing to help us again at no charge to replace these original units? I don't, I don't understand.
They're, 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 say, when we've brought this to them, they, their, their position is they say they've, they've honored their warranty, they've given us a, a ten year warranty for nothing. We send them there, we, and, and we get the, the new MIUs and then they give us another ten years of, of a sliding rate. So we give us twenty years, basically.
When they were here in seventeen, two thousand seventeen, this time, we kinda had the same volume. They came again, tested and gave the results of that last year, so we're at the same, same thing as they were last year this time.
It's the same, it's the same thing.
So we'll wait to hear what they, what they discover. Um, I have, I have more questions, I guess, than anything else on the replacement of the boxes and the relocating of. Customers' lines. I can see that that's a big Pandora's box.
Yes. Say, as a, as a proactive approach to, to reroute those lines and getting all that. To, to, to have the resident do that, it's gonna be quite, quite a task.
You bring up a good point. You go in there and you proactively relocate those, we only relocate to the box. The homeowner's then gotta take it from the box and relay all of his lines again.
And, and then that's the whole issue.
And that, this room won't hold everybody that's gonna be in here with a big question, three word, three letter word, why? I don't, I don't wanna be here for that meeting.
Let's, let's, let's agree on someplace to go.
Yeah.
Uh, Kenny, just one question about last year's report that Zennar did, they did not mention the ETR issue at all?
No.
Nope.
Okay, that's interesting. Okay.
Thank you, Kenny, you've certainly given us a lot to think about.
Thank you, thank you.
That makes no sense.
He's not invited to the next workshop.
But he is, but he will be talking about something else. Tires, maybe.
So, ready to adjourn the, uh, the workshop meeting? Does anyone wanna take a five minute break at this point before we get into the regular meeting?
Yes, please.
All right, so we, so we will do. We'll start at five, or excuse me, four twenty-one.